Something buzzing in your face or something.
It's not the system, it's us.
Call the letter, it's there for me, let's see if we can grow. The video is December fourth, two thousand fourteen, nine to seventeen. I have called the order, any questions?
Dear Attorney Pollard, we ask that you help us this evening as we consider the old business of the City of China Grove. Help us to make the right decisions in the best interest of everyone in our city supporting of us. We ask that you watch over all that might be ill and that you watch over all in this holiday season to keep them safe. And in your love and prayers, we ask.
Amen.
Our other reasons to apply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in principle with liberty and justice for all.
No foul, everyone's here except my train. Consider an act on approval of a new city council meeting on November sixth, two thousand fourteen.
I have one wording, I think, under Old Business Item A. Council agreed to meet for a special Consider an Act on Street Maintenance Project.
Where, which one?
November sixth, meeting. Old Business Item A.
Okay.
About the second to last line of that section says, "Council agreed to meet for a special."
Meeting.
Meeting should be added maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
Other than that, I make a motion to accept the minutes with the correction.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman.
I'll second that.
Second, my house. All those in favor say aye.
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 I can't. And decision. May we approve the minutes for November eighteenth special meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting for the minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
I have my phone on the floor. I'm just going to call for approval. I'll second.
I'll second.
Ladies, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion fair enough. Staff reports, financials, data of city management, we're going to accept that.
Well, I first want to tell you that I'm still working on correcting the account. It's basically the Techstar National Bank account. And you see the Nixon bank still shows some errors, we do some, I found some errors, but we're still, I'm still working on correcting that. So I will read to you as the accounts show. For the period ending November thirtieth, the Techstar National Bank insured investments account was fourteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars and three cents. The savings account, one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. The regular checking account, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. For a total of two hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars in the Techstar National Bank. The Nixon bank shows one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Petty cash accounts totaled two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-two cents. The Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union Certificate of Deposit and Savings, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The Security Service Federal Credit Union Savings and Certificate of Deposit, one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. The Wells Fargo National Bank Public Funds Market Account, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. For a total of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. That was through November thirtieth. I've attached a detailed balance sheet to show the deposits and withdrawals from each account. And I also have a profit and loss budget versus actual through the living with both.
Any questions? Uh, municipal court?
You what?
The municipal court. Municipal court?
Okay. Um, the municipal court report for the period November first through November thirtieth. The total state fees and other liabilities collected were four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Total local court fees, fines and special expenses collected, six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty cents for total collections for the month. Ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. And that is a clean, nothing from the past in this month's collections. We, Clarissa feels like we may have a few more coming in, but we pretty much have all of those taken care of in October when we had the big lump sum that we'll be sending into the state quick. The number of cases filed for the month were sixty-four cases. Fines paid, thirty-two cases dismissed by trial, not dismissed, but disposed by trial number seven. And disposed by driver safety deferred or compliance dismissals, forty-two. And total number of cases completed for the month is eighty-one, which includes, you know, certain more.
Any questions?
Not just a comment, I'm making money here. Thank you, ladies.
Next one, a good question.
First of all, we've got that, uh, sorry, uh, Rob Rickus. We got word today that he's going to return to school. He's bringing us a better doctor saying it's back to normal.
Wonderful.
Good.
We're happy to hear that. Uh, for the month, we continue our inbound program with about what, more inbound for a total of about twenty-five out of the amount. For a counter, um, sure, I reported the number of citation issues. Probably a douche a little bit, maybe didn't have Robert to help us out. We're not getting out of.
Okay. No questions? Hi, I can't hear you.
Good evening, how's everybody doing?
Great.
Awesome. All right, China Grove Fire Nation, month of effort for the month of November. Total calls for the month, sixty-four. We have exceeded five hundred for the year already. Of that, structure fires, we did five. Grass fire, brush fire, two, legal fires, two, unauthorized burns, three, activated fire alarms, five. Motor vehicle collisions, fourteen. Other assist public, one. EMS calls, even called metal in nature, thirty-two, mechanical transport, twenty-two. I haven't got word yet if burn ban is still in effect. I know they were supposed to meet this past Tuesday, but definitely not working yet if it is. But with weather conditions being what they are, we're probably going to announce a burning here in the City of China Grove for the next few days. Conditions supposed to just happen again today, so we'll be doing that. Any questions or concerns?
Still, Chief, pardon me?
Still. That's why the volume's mixed up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Excuse me, Mike, you said that burn ban was lifted?
I haven't got a word from Bear County, they normally let me know, but they haven't. They were supposed to, kind of, it was supposed to meet this past Tuesday. But in the City of China Grove, we're probably going to start allowing it, the condition is going to be like this.
We probably don't allow it.
We are going to allow it. All I ask that, you know, citizens of China Grove, please call myself or the ladies here at City Hall so that you do, uh, we do have, because we do log it.
Yes.
You know, on our phones and whatever, that way. If Danny shows up or somebody calls, they would say, well, we allowed it, it's, thanks, baby. So we just ask that you call.
Thank you.
I understand that you burned those other places, the two spots on Oma?
Correct, I have the lawyers, yes, we did, you finish that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will.
First of all, if you heard, first of all, I would just get this done.
Good evening, Mayor, all members of the China Grove City Council. What I'm here to speak about tonight is I would like to offer my sincere appreciation to the great staff. Sitting there to my left for the untold hours they put in to straighten out our city. It's, it's very enlightening to see what they've done from what our city was into what it is now. And I just wanted to personally thank them and for our new business chief Ralph. Our city's making money, as you had said, Alice, and we've gone from one extreme to the other extreme. I too would also like to thank all of you council persons that were involved in your decisions to get us where, to where we are today. That's all I need to say on that. And also I'd like to refer some further comments to the agenda item under New Business Key, under the zoning ordinance variants. Thank you.
Next on the list is Andrew.
I would refer my time to the New Business Agenda Item also.
Okay. Uh, Frank?
How do you feel about the thing? Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving me the time to speak about these two matters I have. Again, I'm not going to bring up any names, I'll pass that in my mind. But about three years ago, two years ago, I asked to get that edge cleaned out on a subdivision. Never been touched. Council at that time, one of the guys said, "Don't worry about it, I'll take care of it," never been done. So now it's somewhat certain there, the concrete bumps they put there, put the water coming through there to slow it down, you can't even find half of them. Just got that much dirt in there. And so it's been branches, I'm saying, hire somebody, whatever you need to do, get that, they've been there for fifteen years, about time, we just cleaned that once. You know, one time, another fifteen years would be great. I'm off that one. Number two, uh, three weeks ago, I put in, I think seventeen pictures of signs around the city that are damaged, missing, faded, holes open. Just all of them are, all of these need to be corrected. None of my subdivision, in my subdivision, touched. One of them is ice sign for going over the bridge. I know that we have an ice situation and someone does get hurt over there and you don't know about this sign. In amount of time, in three months, it never been fixed, all of them looking for lawsuits. You might think it needs to be corrected, you know, you got time to do it, three months is a long time. And a little bunch of, uh, so see, take a look at this situation and see what we can do to correct it, because there's seventeen of them behind you. You know, so that's all I have, I give them free time.
Is that you referring to some what street?
Oh, the old, oh, that one, uh, triplets, uh, triple trees.
Triple trees.
You go over that, that place that needs to clean out?
Right.
On that side, there's no, uh, half the sign in this is about ice on the bridge. You know, you got the one over there on Green Road, it says, "Single lane bridge," just knocked out of ground, it's never been fixed. So if you come this direction, if you come this direction, you don't realize that car is a single line bridge, you can tell. Safety issue, there, I'll be there, there.
Can we ask why that concrete or whatever was poured over there by this bridge? Do you know what I'm talking about? Why was it poured there in the first place? Because the water stands there.
Well, it stands there because Mr. Miller would not let us go on his property to open up that portion of the water shed that goes to his pond. He stopped the City of China Grove before, before Mr. Miller was on the city council.
Uh-huh.
That we could not go on that property and clean out that portion of the land that flows the water always covered it. So he, his family was the culprit of that.
Well, who put the cement, uh, concrete there?
Uh, Bear County, because that used to be a Bear County road.
But why did they do that?
Because before he had a big dip to go through.
I know, but that water was just seeping to the ground, now.
No, 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 it was a single lane street. And when it came down, if we had flood, you'd go through three, four feet of water to get, to get home. Bear County couldn't put that bridge in there.
Yeah, I know, but why was that thing cemented there on the, in the ditch?
Because if it was just dirt, it would go away. The speed of the water would just take the land away eventually. But the problem is Bill Miller wouldn't let it go on his farm.
I'll get that one, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Uh, next one on the thing is Michael Jones?
Yeah, I'm right here, all right. Evening, good evening. First time being here. I love China Grove, home with Michael Donald fireworks, live here in China Grove. They sent me today. First of all, love China Grove, I only live here, and I should benefit here. And policeman, fire chief, fire chief a little bit. Beautiful town. And we're not going to have any fireworks shows or anything. So just maybe say that to you. And then we're going to be needing probably maybe fire. I don't know, they usually have fire trucks when they have, uh, well, that's good, I'm sorry, I'm getting stuff. Uh, I'm probably going to need a police, policeman for like control, like people firing fireworks from the fireworks stands. I guess, do we get, do we all have that or?
Uh, y'all take it out, out of the scene.
Right, right, but I'm saying, to prevent people from shooting fireworks.
Right. Uh, within fifty feet of the building, isn't that right?
Yeah.
No, a hundred feet, it's a hundred feet in front of the stand.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet.
Hundred feet in front of the stands of the fireworks.
I know they don't want nobody doing, figuring out.
Right.
So get like.
I hate to see one go inside.
Oh, no, 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 yeah. Yeah, because sometimes people pull over to the side and start shooting, you gotta stop them all the time.
Right.
So we'll get a police for that. Any questions on fireworks or?
So there's no place for this, this year.
Excuse me, sir?
There's no place for this year.
No, we're not, we're not having a show, are you?
Okay.
Maybe next year, but we should try to shoot off from two E one south.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty clear that it's open there.
Okay.
And I have a check from my, for a thousand dollars for, for the good work they always do all the time.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
There you go, sir. Thank you, there's too many good guys today. But, yeah, you have any questions for us or?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lady, for your ass. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Under Old Business Item A, discuss seal testing, find action, resolve issues for late in two thousand fourteen street maintenance program.
Mr. Mayor, I can comment on that. Mr. Clemens, our civil engineer, will not be here tonight. Uh, he asked me to inquire, he has given a punch list to the contractor and they're going to meet Monday morning, discuss it and go to the streets and then get to work on the punch test.
And we have everyone from here on from triple ten there?
Yes. Got all of them.
I think the list that's in there is the completed one that I put.
Oh, okay, I see, right, thank you.
We was waiting for trainer, but he finally come through and got it, so they have everything and they're going to meet there Monday morning and get the, get the honor. I'll go ahead and further on there and kind of bring everybody up to date. We had a special meeting on November the eighteenth and had the contractor and our civil engineer, both of them come to our meeting. And we had them give a presentation and we asked a lot of questions. And we're standing right at that time, they're kind of blaming each other to, that somebody made mistake, the reason we didn't get the title street. And as good a period as we expected. So they kind of both was pointing finger at each other, so we, we still in discussion and, uh, there's been a lot of talk, what went wrong. We, uh, we had some, a lot of people looked at them and here are some of the possible things that did go wrong. Uh, rock was too dusty to stick, rock was not rolling up, not enough oil, oil was not the right temperature. Too many rocks, as you know, it looks like a gravel street now. No level up, a lot of the places, uh, that, uh, they didn't do the reclamation, there are still some holes. So they didn't do any, a very good job of the level up. And, uh, the, a lot of people, and maybe one of you noticed it too, after they applied the base and they left it for about seven days while we're driving on it, it becomes kind of like a washboard. And, uh, and that's kind of the way the, they do, that you, they're supposed to come along, grade it and make it smooth before they put the, the rocky gravel in. And that was not done. So that's why I think a lot of this coming through, we will, uh, we will work this out. And try to figure out exactly why, may have to do some tests on that one. There was a question about, uh, no cement being applied to the base, which, uh, Mr. Clemens was, uh, tried to prove that it wasn't. So the test was going to cost like one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And we discussed it with him and we have quite a few witnesses that it did, that it was applied. If anybody saw the eighteen wheeler, that is what applied the cement.
I saw it.
We have.
I was wondering what they're doing, I saw it the last.
A lot of people didn't know what that eighteen wheeler was, but if you saw eighteen wheeler on the street, that was where the cement was actually applied. So we like, we had a lot of witnesses that saw that. So we, we feel like the cement was actually applied in the streets. That's not our problem, our problem is the top coat. So, uh, that's what we're, that's where we stand right now. Uh, Mr. Clemens has contacted a consulting company and they have offered to do some tests. It was the same one that was going to do the core test there, but we told them we didn't think we really needed that one. But they've offered to do a, a test on the surface, which will cost a lot less than the sixteen fifty. And that's if we need to, we, we still got some things to do first. We got, we got to let this contractor do the punch list. See if he's going to come up, see if he's going to get these things straight. And if he doesn't, we might inspect them again, see what we got. And, uh, there's a lot of things we can do. We'll just have to go from there. I, I met with Mr. Clemens on November the twenty-fifth, we walked to the streets and made a pretty good punch list. And the council members, Marge, she did Caravanita, and I took care of Tree Ben, and we had a trainer take care of Triple Ben. So we've got a pretty good punch list, there's quite a few things on it, we have a copy over here. We'll just let him go from there and, and we'll have to see what happens, it's a slow process. We got, we're learning a lot about street, or to know that, we knew what, when we started, we're learning a lot. But we'll, we'll just keep on trucking here so we can get something done. That's the status of the streets.
So if Triple Metal is supposed to be the next street, and, and you're not happy with Triple Ben or the other streets, will you continue with the same people or will you get somebody else or will you be valid or what?
Right now, we're still giving this guy a chance to do the streets right. If he doesn't, we're going to do something and both likely won't do it.
But it's on the next stage, what she's talking about, it'll go out for bids again.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We, we, that, that's involved, so we got to get this out of the way first.
Hello, Amy, come here.
Yeah, uh, I was going to sign up to speak, but I saw it as an agenda item, so I thought I'd wait and see what was said before I said anything. I drove those streets because, I don't know, people think I'm still on council or what, but a lot of people come to me and talk to me about situations. One is that when they finished the road, their driveways are now two to three inches higher than the road. Uh, they're telling me that, uh, when they drive off the street onto their driveway, there's the biggest bump that has ever existed before. And I'm telling you, so I'm hoping some of that is on the punch list.
It is.
Uh, you know, so they're, so that's, that's one of the biggest complaints. Uh, of course, people complain about the dust too. And the surface that I saw, I drove all those roads today because I wanted to have it fresh in my mind when I came here to the council meeting tonight. I drove all those, the, the road, Tree, uh, Tree Ben, Caravanita, uh, Old Purple, and all those places, I, I drove today just to see what was going on. And even with the surface that they had now, it's pretty dusty. Uh, I don't know what was, what the engineer had in the specifications stuff, but to me, uh, the top should have been some type of seal color or something that would have kept that, that, the rocks and stuff together and it would look like a street, a, a asphalt street or what have you and not a rattle road. So I'm hoping that whatever happens in the future, that, that's taken care of and I kind of get it. I pick anything else. When, when, when a subdivision's put in and drive, the street's already there, if you have a good concrete contractor, he's going to give you a lift that high. Because he expects ten years now, I'm going to come in and be asphalted. And if they do that and they got a good service, it's going to be leveled in. If he puts a priority in what you got now, and the new asphalt on this, now you're inch lower.
That's right.
So you still got to do it. So what the contractor did, he tore up the old stuff because he had to, because the subsurface was so bad, he had to go back to the same height he started with. So the contractor didn't do anything wrong in that, in that respect. You know, it, when they put the driveway then, they put it in, you know, for a future, it's like my driveway is still that, that much higher than our street because, you know, been there thirty years, we have done the street yet, that's fine, that's why the difference there. It's something you get used to, you have to be back out of the, it's bad, I have kids that skateboard, so that decided.
I want to ask Mr. Kellison there, his comment here. That is very, what we're talking about, about, about the rock being too dusty. And the contractor says that he got it from a prude, text off, rock, but they brought a bag up here and it was dusty. I don't know, it's somewhere down the line, even though it was prude, that rock is just too dusty.
It was supposed to be washed.
Yeah, it was supposed to be washed. But it was, like I said, he bought it from this place, it's supposed to be right, but we don't think it is. And then concerning all the loose rock, you're right, there is something, that rock was supposed to go in that oil, something happened. And we, we may have to get this consultant to tell us what happened before they do it. Something's wrong.
Yeah.
And we, there's a possibility we will consider putting something on the top.
Uh, that, like I said, there's a lot of things we, we, we need to talk about here, the, first of all, the punch list, we need to see what we got. The council is considering to put some type of ceiling on there, uh, two or three types. And, uh, yes, we, we are considering.
Just a long process, about, because unfortunately there's that, so just in trying out the way we had thought, but we are working on it. Mr., I should say, Mr. Cardy has put his heart into it, keeping up with everything and helping us through this and inviting us, so.
Is there a way that we can, um, get pictures of these roads when it rains, to see where the water is pooling?
Um, if it rains again, yeah.
If it rains, maybe this weekend?
He did, they did have pictures that they did bring to a Mr. from the, Mr. Kelly or Kelly? Draw pictures of areas where he felt that the streets were just fine. But then unfortunately after the rain and different places, it didn't look like that. So, yeah, for rain again, we definitely can't, we have water standing up there by our mailboxes when it rains. It's pretty bad.
Mr. Clemens, Mr. Clemens does have some pictures.
No, I am D. O. B. Consider an act upon proposed, personnel possible.
Marge, you can't, I hope that isn't a big issue.
There's still some corrections I feel needs to be made. The one thing, table contents is off.
Yeah, I had finished it because I wasn't sure if y'all were done with it or not.
Yeah, I got that. I can move it over.
One question I got is, who is designated?
It says it's for, for the page.
I had several changes on.
Are they new, Marty, or they're ones that we talked about?
Well, all those pages are off and then there's a few towards the end of the table of contents that we need to flip because we moved them up above.
Oh, so it's just arranging?
Yeah.
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't finish that because I wasn't sure if y'all were going to change more or.
And then I had on my set that on page five, I mean, part-time operations that.
We were going to take out a particular one.
And change it to something else and it didn't get changed.
Okay, if you'll show me that after we do this.
And other than that, I think it was just little minor things that I thought that.
Well, then, why don't I get it done and then put it on my agenda for January.
And I can give you what, what changes came into the, what I planned at all.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to table it then.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Councilor Table and motion second by Councilor Paul. Under, um.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Under business items C, consider an act upon closing any someone to take marquee up there.
This is something that we've been talking about, trying to get somebody to volunteer to do the marquee and we haven't been too successful. We're trying to take care of it and thought we maybe could get somebody besides him. And I have a suggestion to take over, but we just give our patrolman there a raise and maybe full time. Like he'd make, we can assign him that job.
Because if he can find the time, he can make a do it.
Ask him to volunteer partner.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the part in other duties.
Isn't there some way you can add like?
Pretty much.
I think all of us can do it.
Just to keep it more updated, I think that, like, is keeping it as current as possible. And there might be a way you can set up where you can just pull off the date.
We don't want that's possible.
Yeah.
It was a lot of time to.
I know you can't, but just making it up for you guys.
And it's pretty old and it's hard because the letters and the stuff.
Yeah, my time had about thirty four, my phone.
It would be nice to, as we.
And when it's windy, you can't really do it because they fly off and hit your face while you're.
It's, it's.
It's a challenge.
So usually if it's freezing cold or a hundred degrees.
You've got to recall them.
Or very, very windy, as we all three went out there one time trying to catch them when they were flying, it was all raining, it's great. It's, yeah, there's times when you can't.
But we have been crossing electric.
That's what I was just going to say. I know that there's something in our air conditioning. If we could just.
Maybe a technology, something we can use.
Get some sticky things.
I'll pitch in, I'll pitch in.
If somebody would just take responsibility to that's the end, it'll just.
I'll make a prompt to move.
And wire, and wire, both for ladder ready or something?
It's hard.
Yeah, it's really hard.
It's not really, it's not really easy to work with.
The sign's pretty high, Marty.
Maybe that probably sign was awful.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, that's what we need to really.
But the only, the only thing, sign three times a month and twice a month, you could spend thousands of dollars for electronic signs for changing the letters twice a month. Cast station wouldn't do that.
I think.
Do you volunteer, Mr. Bennett?
I'll do that, I'll do it.
Frank, we do have some fees we collect off the tickets that you can only use for certain things and one of them is like a technology fund. And you can only use it for technology, you can't use it for anything else. And that might be something where we could use it and put it to that.
The court date somewhere too, rather than.
So how much is an electric sign?
Very much, just the sign alone, if you just want a long sign alone, then it's about a thousand dollars.
Just for, just one line and it runs different things through it all the time, it keeps running. So that's, that would be okay maybe?
That makes sense. They're not the whole sign though.
No, no. It's just a one line.
That's smart there, yes.
It might have a concert, she wants to play.
Anyway, we need to keep the old one updated. That's, that's just the point.
If you need some help, let me know.
Okay.
Under added new business, I am A, consider an act upon transfer of some SSFCU, the subject of deposit that matures December seventeenth, December fourteen.
I thought we may need to keep that liquid with the street project. I did however pull a check from the Wells Fargo Public Funds, if you'll look at that one on there, I pulled out one hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-four today. To go ahead and pay the contractor just that part, you know, we're retaining like sixty thousand something for this.
Work.
Mm-hmm, that needs to be done still. So we may be okay, but maybe we can put it in the savings just for a month and then when it, you know, matures, December seventeen, just move it to the savings until we get that settled and we have the funds available.
I think that's true.
Then the next meeting we'll put it back in a CD or whatever if you want the interest in it, you know, it's not that big of a.
I make a motion that so.
What if they ask you how we did, we done over two hundred and fifty at text card?
No, this is at security service, so it'll be in that savings. There's a savings, the S five is six dollars in there.
I make a motion that we go ahead and put that into the savings account of that certificate deposit.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilor Paul to move the certificate deposit at security service FCU to the savings account at SSFCU.
I second that motion.
Have a second from Councilor Rips. All of the favors say aye. All is opposed, motion carried. Under new business, I am Z, consider an act upon fireworks sign and enforcement of fireworks orders.
Ms. Vera, I've got a, one picture in the packet here. The city of Simples is having the same problems we have with fireworks. And what they've done, if they made some signs and every year it's, when it's time of the fireworks season, they put these signs out. And I would like to, like to see if the city would like to get up there and sign to put out. The first thing they'd say would, there's a few fireworks is out. I didn't know it was against the law. Just the way it would be kind of warm a little bit.
Where, where could we put it? Like the subdivisions and?
I think for the interest of the subdivision. Susan, I think that's a price, how many did you?
I did get from one place and they want like fifteen ninety-five for the sign itself with all the wording on it. And then you say you had the stands already. They're three dollars if we need to buy it, but Glenn said he thought he had enough for like.
You think we need ten?
That's what I was thinking, ten there.
Just kidding. The backups, it's something like it's stolen or it's blown away, whatever too. I don't think we need all of them one time, but, you know, I, I think that's a good idea.
Are we going to have a problem if we put these on the state driveway?
I can check it out.
We, don't you, we have a right to put out, if somebody wants to do a sign, put on the driveway, you got a sticker?
I don't know, I'll have to find out.
I mean, we have that right, anyone has the right to do the sign, didn't?
Yeah, I think so.
Also concerning.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
Concerning fireworks gardens, we'd like to have, we've had a, probably a follow-up. I think we ought to have a placement on duty for Christmas Eve and Christmas, New Year's Eve and New Year's, from about six to about two in the morning.
Sorry, Ben, it's good.
Six in the evening to what?
Two in the morning.
Yeah.
Do we have any evening officer on duty the few days before New Year's Eve as well? That, you know, people will be buying and starting to shoot off like they kind of do fourth of July?
Now that Robert's back to full duty, we're going to read schedules and stuff and we'll be able to do that.
Okay. So sometimes the day or two before the big day, they'll be testing them out and seeing which ones they might go back and get more of and, you know, you hear them going all the time, so, you know, we could maybe have an officer until at least maybe ten o'clock at night.
Right.
What do you think about the signs lying?
It's a good idea. I mean, because I agree with Councilor McCarthy, because, I mean, in the past, we've had to deal with people and that's the first thing they find, why didn't they?
Yeah.
Of course, one way to solve that is issue a citation, they find out real fast.
Right.
And then that works very, it's real fast also.
And you put them on the, the signs come in at China Grove, says China Grove, say this China Grove, can you put them on that? Just for that week or so? Because that way they draw it in China Grove, they already see a sign from China Grove saying no fireworks allowed. You know?
That's a good idea.
That's the area that I don't know as a person, maybe I don't know.
Yeah, we could look at it.
You only got three entrances anyway.
Yeah, we have ten signs, I don't know what.
This is an idea, they heads them up and God, I didn't see it, well, it's on a sign, you might should come in.
And have them.
This is a.
Like Mr. McCarthy said in the, in the subdivisions, you know.
I can contact staff and find it out, we can stick them on there.
Well, see, if you, if you play scoop it and say, I didn't know, after that, but you're okay. But take it two weeks. But take it two weeks for it out.
Well, I make a motion that we order these signs for the fireworks.
Or lie too.
I make a motion that we order these signs for the fireworks. Oh, ten.
Have a motion on the floor for just ten signs for fireworks.
I'll second.
Have a second from Glenn. All is opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carried. Under new business, I am Z, consider that plating the apartments for seventy-four ninety-eight, how many, seventies, point three four acres, issue a certificate of determination.
That's the Ryan Stark property up there where, you know, where RST construction is. He's got the three-quarter acre that fronts on eighty-seven and then it makes an L, goes back on Edwards, fronts on Edwards. But the, the part that fronts on eighty-seven is only point three. It's not three-quarters of an acre. It's about a third of an acre. And they're wanting to put a metal building on it. The engineer needs a certificate of determination from the city saying that it doesn't need platted. But according to our records, I believe it does. So I think I put documentation in there for y'all from the ordinance. And since it's a three-quarter acre and then another larger acre, he would most likely need to replat the whole thing to, in order to be able to put anything on it.
Right, it's a dead lot, right?
Mm-hmm, if he doesn't.
So you have to replat so it all becomes one bit?
One lot and, you know, it's, like I read the ordinance, it would need to be platted, so I wanted to help them make that decision.
Didn't he put a building, did he have sewer and stuff in that?
Yeah, he would have, and see, you know, the city has a requirement of smallest lot is three-quarters of an acre, but evidently that was cut out sometime before.
And that would be included in the whole thing?
It would be, it would be a recreation first, I think, then the whole thing also. Because he wouldn't be able to put a house on anything or, you know, building when he's in that small acre.
So they're telling, the one respect of the three-quarters acre?
Do what?
They tell on the three-quarter acre?
Yes.
It's a dead lot because it was, that lot was made.
Well, not just that, but there's, there's a statement in the ordinance, I thought I sent it to y'all, that says every lot must be, if there's going to be a building on, it must be platted and they want to put a building on it.
Area dis.
I just took the different pieces from the zoning ordinance and sent them to you all. Yeah, under construction, construction regulations, every building erected will have to, on one or more lots, shall be far be platted and then you can only have three-quarters of an acre, the smallest lot. So on those two things alone.
I'll make a motion that we require them to replat.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Councilor Perry to replat that point three four acre that seventy-four ninety-eight, seventy. And a second by Councilor Paul. Any discussion?
Okay, Al, she made the motion?
No, Lynn.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
In other words, two oh four point three four, two eight, point seven five acre lot, correct?
Or bigger.
Or bigger, whatever, yeah, ready, has to come on.
All is opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carried. Under new business, I am D, consider an act upon request for zoning class from class one residential to class two commercial for seventeen seventy, South Austin Road. Casey Bartek, sixteen point nine acre, we took the contractor charge, change of zoning to commercial.
Good evening. I'm Casey Bartek. I'm the owner and president of Bartek Construction. We're a local construction company in San Antonio. I'm just getting a packet for the concrete. Over the past couple of years, my business has grown. We're a utility contractor. We work for City of San Antonio, AT&T, San Antonio Water Systems. I'm located at fifty-two twenty-one Clark Street, off of Fort Ten. Out of Rome, the acreage and the offices that I'm on now, and I need to expand. We have about seventy-seven five acres. Kind of looking at moving to China Grove if I can get a variance in the zone on this piece of property on Foster Road. I've included in the packet a survey, a kind of a layout, overhead view of maybe what the front would look like with some landscaping, parking lot. And then on the last page is a layout of the building, side profile and a vertical profile.
Isn't it, is not the last property on the city guys on that road?
I'm, I'm not sure if it is or not. I think there's at least.
I believe there's a piece to the north. This property is not really designated very well from the road. There's a large tract of land that lies north of it and I believe the city limits is Joe Lewis.
What is the properties that, not Joe Lewis, that those properties that front on Joe Lewis, they're, they're.
The back up on the, on the east side.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the south side.
They have about a hundred feet from Joe Lewis.
No, it's, it's, it's over there where they bought that land with the church in, it's the north of that property.
I have two times.
See, then it's going back to the property.
A hundred feet from Joe Lewis.
Yeah. If I'm directly have a gas line.
Yes.
Going down at the north corner.
That is correct.
North corner.
And there's a, a twenty-inch pipeline driveway on the north end of the property.
Might be on the.
North.
Northeast. It's shown already on the survey.
I, I see one.
Yes, there is a gas line going almost around. The one to the north of it is a, uh, it's a different type of gas line. It's, uh.
It's normal.
Go ahead, make that. It's eleven.
Code.
Yeah, it's from.
Ship all kinds of stuff to the coast. Could be transmission fluid, diesel, diesel.
Gas line on the north side of the property, but there's a CPS gas pipeline.
Distribution service line?
Yeah, twenty-four inch vein.
Okay.
And then the water is on the other side of the street.
Right. I believe the water supply is a piece.
So.
Well, it's soft, yeah.
Do we need to have any type of, uh, hearing?
Yes, there is a process and, uh, like I told Mr. Bartek, only the property owner can request a zoning change. But he wants to make a purchase of this contention on being able to change. And he wanted to talk to you all to see if that's something you would consider, knowing what kind of business he plans to put on there. So, um, we would have to go, once he owns it, he could come in and request it. Then we'll go through the process of notifying the property owner and all your public hearings. And, uh, even after the public hearing, you have to wait so many days before you can go on it to approve it. So it will be a process. It'll take a couple of months probably.
Another question, Susan. What about the properties on the other side? Do we want to do that at the same time that they have requested?
They have to request.
We couldn't do it.
Uh, so we notify them and that it's gonna be changed, I guess. I'll check into that.
Yeah, if we, if we notify them and, and my, my, we can't call that.
Yeah.
Because it's having.
Was, yeah, we have to notify.